Let's go.
I didn't read it out, but I'll have a guess.
Yeah, yes.
Next Monday night.
No, like she's, you can ask.
We said right on that, that doesn't mean it will, but you can ask.
Same way works the other.
Oh, we need him to order if he would all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every nation of us.
And where do you do a vote call for us?
Noah? Renee? Lee? Lori, excuse us. Gerald? Jeffrey?
And for the agenda, there is one thing to adjust on here and have it as a discussion item, the resignation of item number fifteen on this list, but it will have to be a motion made to accept that by the board as well. So really it would be a decision. With that adjustment, do I have a motion to approve the?
Make a motion to approve that.
This motion, do you have the support?
Support.
Please supports. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Let's vote on vote.
Noah? Yes. Lee? Yes ma'am. Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the past meeting minutes including the board packet. Do we have a motion to accept or do we need to?
I will make the motion to board to accept the board's minutes.
Motion by Noah, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Renee, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All vote both same time. Hearing none, motion passes. Next, we have the treasurer's report. You know, there were some discussions over this before, very likely in the process here. The treasurer's office and clerk office reconcile and compare things, which is why we would notice something like that. Now here, it's closer now. We do have, after taking office, we had in August, about six months after we took it, and we'll have the results of that this next month. Most likely, we've gone through the process of doing all that, so any issues there should be revealed, and so we'll know those. But otherwise, does anyone have any questions, thoughts, any comments, concerns about the treasurer's report? Hearing none, we will place it up front. Next, we have the bills, and do we have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll move to pay the bills.
May I make the motion? Do you have the second?
I'll second it.
No, the second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we will call a vote.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes, and next we have the department report, if you would chief styles.
I submitted my report to you, you can see it consistently saying that above-average remarks and marks for incidents. I've been real excited to report those incidents happening since July, but any investigation is open and pending, and I will not allow my staff discussing them.
Perfect.
That's all I have.
Next, we have the planning commission report, if you would leave.
Let's see, the planning commission met on July 7th. Let's see. First on the agenda was amendment to sign ordinance, there's just a third of the garbage and discrepancies that would have made certain parts more restrictive than the previous version. Next was outdoor storage as part of the mini warehousing or mini storage units, which the board recommended last month, or the previous month. We discussed and decided to approve, bring into public hearings, and continuing the process, as it's reasonable to allow outdoor storage at storage units. Third, on the agenda was allowing technology additions to non-conforming signs. We discussed it, and allowing a non-conforming sign to add more things to it, and sound, we should do that, so we decided to drop that. Let's see, and last was another board-directed review of agricultural care care county. It's for to have employees living on the premises, and adding an extra dwelling. Because it only permits one, the ag zoning permits one dwelling per parcel. After discussion, we decided there wasn't that many people inquiring into it, and we decided to leave it as be, and if we needed to do that, to go through the very process.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have our first public comment section, and a couple of things I want to address here, because I did have some complaints over people taking a long time, which ends up being unfair, someone gets up and talks for 10 minutes, which is very reasonable. At first, we were having the working sessions, and those can get kind of wild, because decisions aren't being made, I like them, but then we did have one month where we had five meetings, and that was quite a lot for everyone, or at least the feedback that hurt. So I condensed discussion items and decision items into a single meeting, and then some of that got a little mixed. So specifically on this, we do have two public comment sections. So on the first one, well, people come up, they can address something that's on the agenda. I wanted to do it right after I got in office, I just ended up pushing it further and further back, to get a time indication device. And this is a basic one, I've used it in other speaking clubs outside of government, and basically the first light, in this case, will stay green for the first minute, the yellow light will stay yellow for the second minute, the red light will turn red for the entire third minute, and then it leaves at the end as well. Just so that everyone gets a fair shake on having the same amount of time to speak. And then the board, instead of discussing, when a comment comes up, we can just acknowledge that a comment was made. I also, to address communicating more in various forums, I have an Ask You If Anything, is what I'm calling it, with a meeting, that will just be with me, people can come in, they can complain or ask questions about anything they want, from a personal level to the township business, to my beliefs and whatever they happen to have, and that can just be a discussion, since no decisions will be made there. And then also starting a video information series for things like gypsy malls and channels, and like global outlet device, and all these various things that are always happening and being updated, that way people can just see them when they would like. And then our second public comment section, at the end of the meeting, that one can still get a little more wild, and that way, if people were coming for a specific item on the agenda, and that has been taken care of, and they want to leave at that point, they can, and then that can be more of a discussion, a little bit more of a free-for-all that we would like. Saying all that, if someone would like to make a public comment, please come up to the lectern, say your name and address. Seeing none, we will move on to our agenda items. The first one being a land sale for parcel, they go on parcel number, but sixty-one, zero, seven, zero, zero, two, two, zero, 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 two, zero, five, because it doesn't have a specific address, and it's not a little piece. So on this, we had to amend a bid of $200, and we do have a single bid submitted, so I will open that now. Is there any little piece for you? $250 is the bid. So we do have to notice that we had sent out a lot of some hosted, and this was that tiny little vacant piece of land, we put up for bid last month.
I make a motion to accept a $250 bid, receive a parcel, six, one, zero, seven, zero, zero, two, two, zero, 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 two, zero, five.
Support. Support by Lee, do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, we will call a vote.
Lori, yes. Lee?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Gerald?
Yes.
And Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have a land sale request, and this is for several parcels coming off of Russell Road, and in the information packet, we have the estimate for the value of the parcels, an appraisal of twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars, and there are four of them, coming off of Russell Road, the map is also in there. And the other documents are comparables for the.
Does that price that per parcel, that's helpful?
Yep.
And I will make a motion to open parcels sixty-one, oh, seven, five, oh, one, zero, four, seven, zero, 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 one, zero, zero. Partial six, one, zero, seven, five, zero, one, zero, four, eight, zero, 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 one, zero, zero. Partial six, one, zero, seven, five, zero, one, zero, four, nine, zero, 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 one, zero, zero, and six, one, zero, seven, five, oh, one, oh, five, oh. I should say zeros, zero, 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 one, zero, zero, under consideration for bidding, minimum of twenty-five thousand.
All right, the minimum was set at twenty-five thousand, did you say Noah?
Yep.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Renee, any other discussion? Hearing none, we will call a vote.
Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the enforcement process resolution, and specifically on this, I wrote a decent amount of research, talking to people about it. And the idea here is to essentially, one aspect is to limit my own power, so that I can't enforce at my whim, and then to establish an objective process of how things are being enforced, so there is less flexibility, which is why a lot of local municipalities don't do something like this, but I think it's important to establish a process of the process for enforcement. The reason for moving forward with a resolution first is that if there are any kinks in the system, it is currently still flexible, whereas when you put it in as an ordinance, then it becomes less flexible, and it's more the process of putting it in. So the overall idea being that we put this in place, and then we're working through this, and it seems to be working, which has a part where it takes appeal to the zoning work appeals before taking legal action, and there's a step where people can officially request mediation. If everything's been working, maybe a year later, we go through the process of the planning commission for adjusting and putting it into the ordinances.
So this is the final draft?
This is the final draft of the resolution.
Well, it's not going to be, it's not going to be the final draft of the ordinance.
If, if the ordinance, if this is all working well, then it can be the final draft of the ordinance as we enforce.
There's not yet question.
Yeah, but if something needs to be adjusted, if something, or a grid.
Yeah, I was just looking at the timeline, I was trying to, okay.
The timeline, the timeline is interesting, because if you're adding steps, like people requesting mediation and taking it to a hearing before the zoning work appeals, it adds some time.
It does, but I'm just saying, I was looking at the timeline, and I, there were a couple of questions about that, but is, if this is good, I mean, if this is basically a starting point, and we're going to look at it and review it, and go, and work out the kinks, because I can see a couple already, then that's fine, I just don't want it to be something like you said, that it's an ordinance, and it's harder to change.
Right.
We need something, I agree, but questions, okay.
I make the motion to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash thirty-four pertaining to the enforcement process.
Motion by Renee, do we have a second?
Have the support.
Seconds, any other discussion?
I have no problem with this, I just need to make a comment of, some of this needs to be, the double spacing needs to be taken out, because Lori's signature will be left.
Oh, yeah.
True.
I can, I can make adjustments on the final document, I was just, yeah, that's not.
That way something could be just slipped in.
Exactly, no. Okay, I'll make the adjustments, it's all compressed and.
Just the link of the document left Lori's signature alone, I don't find the page without any wording, so.
So, yeah.
Just saying that should be adjusted.
Good call.
True, and anyone else? Hearing none, let's roll call vote.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the vaccine passport resolution, obviously a tumultuous political issue of our time, and for, definitely for the first six months, but now it's turned into something more like the first eight months, I tried to focus on management and getting that together before tackling anything politically, but I'm not afraid of tackling the big political issues of our time, this is definitely one that everyone's debating, which would go on these various things. This in particular, I based off the one that was passed by Meskeaton County, but I adapted it by deleting some things that I didn't think made a lot of sense, adjusted some of the wording as well, but I think it, I think it came out fairly well.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If Meskeaton County has already adopted one, why do we, as a township, when we reside in the county, have to adopt one as well? I'm just curious about that.
We don't have.
It was brought up by a precinct delegate that is very concerned in our community.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, each, each level of government can.
Right.
Take their stance on these types of things. Township and county and states, and the country are all largely debating.
Township, protect our township, for sure. Excuse me, I have grocery store, gas station, that's not required, that's worth a shock at in the future.
I make the motion to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash thirty-three pertaining to vaccine passport. I second that motion.
Motion by Renee, second by Noah, any other? Hearing none, we will call a vote.
Renee?
Yes ma'am.
Noah?
Yes.
Lee? Gerald?
Yes.
Lori, Noah? Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have administrative assistant and deputy treasurer resignation, and Jessica has been great to work with, she does a lot here, she's been here twelve years, she has an opportunity to move into a position that offers more growth, and she thinks is a better fit for her life moving forward. Luckily, she has given us a decent amount of time, as you can see in the resignation letter, that she is able and willing to work through Monday, September thirteenth. And on this specifically, I have written it up as a brief, as a discussion item, but we will need a motion to accept a resignation, and we can accept it through, or thinking through Mondays, September thirteenth. And that gives us a decent amount of time. I have an ad out for accepting applications, and we already have over sixty applications for the position, so there'll be a lot to go through, and that is one of the things we should discuss on the exact process, because of the importance of the position, and then it makes a lot of sense to go through a fairly extensive process, like we did for the zoning administrator. I think that process worked out pretty well, completely open to other discussion items as well. Before we have that discussion, though, do we have someone to make a motion to accept this resignation?
I make a motion to accept the resignation of Jessica Kidder with regret, and heart sickness. There it is.
Through Monday, September thirteenth?
Through Monday, yes. Through Monday, September fourteen, thirteen, thirteen.
Perfect, all right, motion by Lori, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
No more seconds, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's roll call votes.
Lori, yes. Noah?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gerald?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. So just to discuss this process a little bit, we have all these applications in, now there are various ways I can sort through them, who has filled out the information correctly, who has completely filled out the information that normal type of thing. And then we, I go through the resumes, they make a lot of sense, and see who's qualified, we definitely have some qualified people that have already applied, and sort those out. I can send out IQ and personality testing, like I did before, and that can help us sort it out a little bit more, and at that point, I can do calls, for interviews, reference calls as well. I think it would make sense to have another interview, a panel interview, I think it would make sense to have the panel interview with the people in the office, because they're working with a position of the most robust positions. And then based on that, to bring a recommendation to the board, that's the exact process that we went through for the zoning administrator. Is everyone good with that, or do you think something should be different?
I would like to see, I mean, obviously you know, sixty people, but if you, you know, if you go through it, I didn't, I don't know what I expressed this last time, but I did not like that we were given an option of yes or no for one person, I didn't, I didn't feel that was a process. I want how you got there, and he's a great, highly qualified, it's not that, it's the process that I did have an issue with, I think that there needs to be a little bit more. For example, if you got it down to five people, or like, like a vast position, that was quite true, as a trustee, he had a little more say in it, I realize in spite of fact that they're working on a daily basis, we're still entrusted by the control and election process to be part of the decision-making processes for our township.
Correct.
So I'd like to see the final, final few.
Yeah, we could come.
So like the final, like, the panel interview should include the trustees if they want.
We could do it that way, then we have to publicly post it as a meeting, yes?
I may. When they did my process, we started with twenty-two applications, we got to eleven for a first interview. Second interview was a different process with outside people that had no contention within the organization, that was up to five, the last final two were an active open voting in front of the board and citizens.
That's cool.
That's how we did, I will tell you as an applicant, that is probably the toughest application process ever seen.
It's a little brutal.
Brutal is not a threat.
Well, that's what we got, I know.
It's a very good process, but I will tell you this, it's a very lengthy process, we started the process in, help me, trial, April, April, I was here twice, and the final board meeting was April, so no May.
May.
Remember, May seventeenth was the, so it had a special board meeting, and it was packed. It went well, I think it was a good process, it allowed the board, it allowed citizens to ask questions, I didn't mind a little different position than Jess's, though I think Jess's is a little more important than mine. Yeah, everybody forgot it. But, but I think that, that allowed not only the community, who will be working with daily, but, but the board to understand the person. Again, a very arch, very stressful interview process, but in my mind, now there was no, there was no question, in, in the citizen's minds, and in the board's mind, I don't remember if you guys remember paneling, three amigos, did, did. There were questions, when did those go out, do you remember, where'd you find the packet, I know, you guys got asked questions, and I weren't able to submit those, I don't remember when we were able to submit those, that was a part of that.
Yeah.
They had a list of other questions that you could ask, and I don't know who they were, but they never found that, I remember eight or ten questions, the interview was about twenty minutes for a candidate, so, and Gerald. I think it was a fair process, so I get a lot of the board interacting, a lot of the community interacting.
Well, that's true, so instead of doing, well, we could do them at the same time, we could have a panel interview with office staff, but also having a public meeting, so that the trustees are here as well, and then everyone can ask whatever questions they want. And then we could, well, act call a special meeting if we want some overlap time, well, Jessica is still here, no, we're, we're unvalued.
I will tell you, when they did mine, when the house committee, we went outside, and it was still, because we were involved, that one, so they come back here, and they come to the house, right now, I mean, there was, it was that, yeah, it was either get a lawn back home, or a real lawn back home.
How many years ago was that?
Well, Jessica, unofficially, as a, she was an intern initially, she got hired, and you were an intern, took over in bed right after, so, where it was in the exact style.
So what if we do, what if we do the process that we did with the zoning administrator? You get the applications, have them do the testing, you do, you do the first interviews? Didn't you do an interview with?
I had a working interview, so.
Working interview?
So a phone interview, call references, do a working interview, base them those, bring a few people.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, do the work, do it the same process, you do the, the beginning interviews, narrow it down some, then do you and Jessica do interviews, like we did with.
Yeah, do a working interview.
Yeah, working interview. Then do the panel interview with the office staff. Out of that, come up with two or three candidates, and bring the two or three candidates to the special board.
I know I was special.
Yes, because, yeah, I think that would be better.
Yeah, yeah, is that the same reasoning there?
Uh huh, yes, it does.
Yeah, perfect. All right, we're all set discussing that portion, we'll move on to the second public comment, and if anyone would like to make a public comment on anything in the universe.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Karen Fowler, twenty-seven, sixty-nine, Little Lake Road, what does this vaccine passport resolution, what do you mean by that?
I'm trying to, you know, not worry about the time, and.
No, I just have one, that's all.
Even into your time, because I'm answering, so.
Okay.
Which normally I would pause time. But vaccine, so, resolution number twenty-two-one dash thirty-three, resolution protecting citizens from vaccine passport mandates, whereas Dalton Township desires that medical decisions be an individual choice-free mandate, and whereas vaccine passports reduce individual freedom and harm patient privacy, and whereas there are instances where an individual may be unable or unwilling to be examined, tested, vaccinated, or treated for reasons of health, religion, or conscience, and whereas requiring vaccine passports for everyday life activities has the effect of creating differing classes of citizens, and whereas exemptions for vaccines aren't and should be allowed for medical, religious, and philosophical reasons, and whereas vaccine passports are thus discriminatory, and whereas it is necessary to protect the rights and privacy of individuals to allow for the operation of commerce, therefore be resolved that Dalton Township does not support, endorse, or enforce mandatory vaccines or requirements to provide any documentation certifying vaccination or post-infection recovery to gain access to entry upon or service from governmental or business entities.
Okay, that's, that's, I just, it just, you just said vaccine passport resolution, I didn't know what that meant.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ralph, twenty-seven, ninety-five, Little Lake Road, just asking, does anybody have a timeframe on the bridge on Little Lake Road? They tore it apart, and then everybody's complaining, I haven't seen them come back.
So I talked to the workers when they were out there at the time, and they thought they were going to have it done within a few days, and that was, I believe it was the first day they were out there, and now that doesn't seem to have happened, I'm not sure how long it's been, but it's been longer than the few days that I was thinking, and so I don't have a timeframe beyond that.
It's supposed to be the second that it came.
Okay.
That's the most I got, the third.
Okay.
That was their start, that said it was sent in the second.
Yeah, I think.
Well, the second and third, nobody asked this month, this month, it's supposed to be going in the second or third?
It's supposed to come out, the letter said it came out in the second, I didn't receive it till the third, that the work was coming down, third, it would be down relatively early.
So the timeframe that I had would have had the work being done by now.
Right, yeah, that's, well, yeah, I mean, that's what people would have assumed, you know, the other thing is that, you know, when something like that comes up, being that you do have that website, Concerned Citizens of Dalton Township, it might have been a good plan to, when that came out, you should have went on there and said, hey, by the way, people, because it caught a lot of people off guard, nobody knew, nobody knew it was happening, so. That need to be put out there, as long as you have the website, use it, you know, use it for that kind of thing, that would be very helpful to the community, I mean, stuff like that, we used to get updates like that about what road construction was coming up for the month, so people had an idea of, you know, just what I'm just saying, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to, I, you know, this is a little criticism, I see a lot of political stuff on that website, but I don't see a whole lot of things that are really specific to our township and our day-to-day road construction, you know, and I'm, I'm glad to put the gypsy mall survey, but I'm concerned that not enough people. but I'm concerned that not enough people have seen that.
No, I haven't seen that.
And, you know, I think it should be put on all the different websites, you know, there's, you know, I'm sure many of you have, you know, are on several different, you know, one like Road News, one like Michigan Residents, whatever, Drain, all those different sites, there's hundreds of them. But, you know, it should be on more than just that one because, you know, there's not enough followers there. There are not enough people who are gonna see it. And we all have different experiences, completely different experiences, so.
And what about those people that don't, don't do that, Facebook?
That don't do the Facebook, but either way, I mean, at least it's an attempt. You know, I, I just feel like Concerned Citizens of Dalton Township is very political and not enough our daily notices of what's going on, really going on in our township.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. I mean, I'm not super active on there, obviously, started this.
Well, you should be, because you are in charge of it, so you need to be, I'm just saying.
Well, I can shut it down before you.
You can't, you know, you can't start driving the bus and then just leave it somewhere else for someone else to make it all. I'm just saying, sorry.
All right, so what's going on? Yeah, we can, we can dive into Facebook.
Leave the fire truck at the scene.
Yeah, we're diving into Facebook.
I was just wondering if you were able to post about the golf carts, that, that during day notice?
The notices, yeah, so the notices are going out, I think I signed 28 documents.
He signed, he signed the documents that go out to all the municipalities in Meskeen County and I sent them certified mail today. I'm gonna meet with Steve tomorrow and we're going to work up the ad that's gonna go out into the paper.
Which paper? Oh, how will people see this?
It's gonna go in the Chronicle, um, anything like that, I'm posting on my web, on my Facebook page, guys. And I'm posting on Concerned Citizens.
Okay.
Okay, and it will be on the board out here. I don't have like any direct mailing or anything like that.
And the Beacon.
And the Beacon, well, we haven't, we haven't had a lot of good luck with the Beacon, but I've been trying to.
Well, that's a better paper than the Chronicle.
You'd rather have it in the Beacon?
Yeah.
All right. So will it be done then by driving for the next meeting?
It's ready for, it's ready for the September meeting.
Perfect, okay. And one other thing, I was just wondering about the channels. Did you have anybody come to take a look at them, uh, to see what, what they possibly can do?
Yeah, yeah, I've been on to the channels quite a few times. I had the Michigan Conservation District work up a quote for doing work on them. Now, the issue with those, well, and we know that the issue was the, the sides weren't braced up very well. So they were collapsing. Then the spring, with the droughts, which apparently were having the opposite now. And so the water went down, so it exasperated the, the problem, made it very obvious. And so we need to do that again to a certain extent. We have the permit from Eagle to do work by hand on it. I had the county extend the permit for a year. And when I came into office, there was no maintenance plan at all. I assumed we had some sort of contract for maintenance, something like that, it was not.
We have best time.
There wasn't. So they spent $84,000, but there wasn't a plan moving forward beyond that. And so because the sides weren't properly braced up, we have to look at that. Now, right now, we have a quote for a little over $20,000. But last week, the core laws that they'd used to brace up the side on that type of work, the price increased by 35%. So that price is not guaranteed for next year or anything like that, but we will have to work it into the budget to try to make those work proper.
So then when will they start work, or when will this happen? I'll tell you, I'll tell you in the fall, it fills up with leaves. I removed, I removed leaves between Westlake and Middle Lake four times. Went there and dug it out so there'd be, and then, and then we had other people help and took it away in a trailer. So you've got a major problem in the fall with leaves. So I don't know when you're gonna go about doing this, is this gonna be spring then? That you're talking about, that some maintenance might be done, or what?
Well, that project wouldn't be done until next year or sometime in the summer. So as far as the maintenance goes, there's, basically, we have to ramp up our maintenance department. I basically doubled the maintenance department, since I got in, but we could use a few hundred percent increase.
So they're gonna get shovel this out?
Yeah.
And then where are they gonna put the stuff that they shoveled?
If it's sand, I talked to.
It's gonna be buck?
And the leaves.
Leaves and sand.
Right.
Very heavy, I don't know where they're gonna throw it. Or they're gonna have to take it to the middle, to the end of that road, dump it into something, or put it in wheelbarrows and have to wheel it out, a chit-chatting, a major thing for people to have to do.
Right, so that's all the stuff I was gonna say, there you go.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, what was your name again, I did Mary Jean Smith, Mary Jean Smith, thank you.
Yeah, it will be, it'll be a mess going forward, no matter what the year is, I mean, they're not natural channels, so the channels don't want to be there.
They are natural channels.
They have no.
In which case, they would have been there without the digging.
Without the digging, they were there for years.
Right, so why did we spend $84,000 last year?
We should have let the county do it.
Because he wouldn't let, he wouldn't let the drain commissioner.
He wouldn't let the rain question him, he wasn't there.
A very, very odd, odd decision, I would say.
When that was put in, in the drain commissioner's office, there was evidence that that was to be maintained by the county. And it was never followed up, but there was, there was documentation that it was there because I talked to one, somebody that worked in the drain commissioner's office.
Yeah, it was a big project.
When this whole thing started in 1984.
1953.
No, no, I'm just talking about recently, more recently, I talked to somebody that was in the drain commissioner's office. And said there was evidence there that that was to be maintained when that drain was put in, when the ride drain behind my house was put in. That there was, that was to be maintained by the, by the county.
So then that should be looked into? Will they took it out?
It's been looked into, the township hired before us to get those. So it's the township's problem now, it will be an ongoing problem.
Because the township took it over, then we have nothing to go back on.
Because, right, they took it out of the ride drain project.
Right.
Yeah, because you would not, you would not give her the right of ways for to do it. So she was locked in, so she said, all right, if you're gonna take care of it, you've got it.
And that's where we are?
That's where we are. And Tony said, oh yeah, we will take care of it, we'll maintain it, yeah.
All right, any other public comments?
Martin Johnson, 2225, Westlake Road. Now, it's August, how is the hobby project going?
That was my question.
So I've gotten various communications from him. It seems like in the last few, few weeks, that his timeframe is up here, he's tried to push to get his various paperwork through. It doesn't seem, he doesn't have it all through. It doesn't seem to me like he's going to be successful with that. So I talked with the sheriff, I talked with the sheriff before about it, about what needs to be done. I talked to the lawyer about it and basically we'll probably, unless he, unless he somehow gets his paperwork in here very soon, uh, in about the next week, then we'll probably have to have, look at contract with a record company and that type of stuff.
Okay, because it's been six months, you said, sir, you need them six months. And we said, hey, well, at that meeting, you're gonna give them six, eight, 12, he's still like.
Yeah, so we're all right about the six right, right now. Richard, 4525, East Westlake, uh, Dan Ryan, say your names.
Was her name involved, the body?
Time, the name of the body.
Do we want to hear the name of the body?
If they ask, we will.
Yeah, so Brooke and I, not confident I'm gonna say this last name right, but DePater?
DePater.
Thank you. That's, I'm sure, wrong.
Just wanted to make sure you weren't bothering Rachel.
Any other public comments? I'll lightly address, based on, the reason I started the group was for people to be able to have open political discussions, debating whatever they want. That is slightly too idealistic of a view of nature, of course. And I tried to even not delete anything, I still haven't blocked anyone or kicked anyone out of the group, but I do remove some of the posts that are just completely unrelated, that are about Spring Lake or just about the state, something like that. I get on there, I try to get on there maybe like once a week, something like that. People are completely open to put out whatever they want. We did, I did run a little bit of a test recently and then Jessica put the Gypsy Mall survey onto the website and we left it for a few days, exactly zero people responded, and so nobody checked the website. And then I ordered on Concerned Citizens and within a single night, I think 17 people responded, something like that. So it does get some use for those types of things. To address more informational items moving forward, uh, I am gonna be doing some of the video updates on YouTube because that'll be useful. I obviously used to write a lot, but because this job has been eating so much of my time, I have written very little about, about anything. I think I've written a handful of articles since I've been in office. I'm doing the monthly political article for the Beacon, uh, so that gets some information out, but largely about political things. So just on the management side, more of those video updates will be coming and I'll post those as well. And I did think about some of the road construction updates, but I can post some of that as well. Good, any other public comment? Any board comment? Hearing none, we give our motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Motion by Lori, support. Hearing none, all our favorites.
No, you can have it.
No, it's fine.
You're the boss, Lori.
No, that's, I read it, it's fine.